I'm going to ask for an executive session tonight afterwards for legal issue. Just to give you a heads up. No, it doesn't go past midnight. I shouldn't be very quick.
Qualification.
Get groggy after midnight. If not before.
Hey Scott. How are you Scott? Good.
Hey.
We're here until six thirty. We're actually at six twenty-five and then we got dinner real quick and came back. Talk afterwards.
They're productive.
Actually.
I'm going to ask for an executive meeting. Or for with Susan.
Yes. Especially not being. Thank you. You're going to need a plug in too, right?
Um, should be charged, but I don't think they last that long.
Yeah.
Some point. How long?
It'll be short because we got Scott.
Chair's work.
Terms of raising them up or trying to sit higher or lower.
No, just trying to get the armor up.
I had no idea how to work.
All the way down and then find your position. All the way down and then pull it up.
Now do I have to have it pushed in or no?
What's that?
Do I have to have that button pushed in or?
Yeah.
I see that.
Yeah, they're special.
I'm singing a little high, I'm scared to touch my chair.
Wow, look at that. I will not move it again. That one's good.
All the way up.
Well, yeah, look at the bad place.
It's just.
It's just the arm thing.
Terry texted me.
You got fan clubs.
I do.
That's so nice. I can't get my fan club to come to these meetings. He had to. That was for scouts. Captive, he had his requirement for scouting.
Try not to be so. Try not to be so happy. As I used to be. Text my last. He said I wasn't until physical. And then it's blocked four off, so I'm really good. Sorry to hear that. Shame. Oh. When they're rotating.
Gentlemen, you ready? Like to call the Easthamfield Township Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Before we begin, I have an announcement that I'd like to make clear to everybody tonight. There was a flyer that was circulated to some of our residents in reference to a petition to rezone a piece of property along South Chickies Road and two State Route 283. It listed that that meeting or that that issue would be discussed tonight. That was incorrect information. That issue will be discussed at our next meeting on March sixteenth. So if you're here for that meeting, we still welcome you, but we wanted to give you that information that will not be discussed this evening. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply and the meeting will be run by the chairman who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Please text your name and address and your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone. After speaking, we ask that you please mute your microphone. Easthamfield Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. All comments should be directed to the board. We will now move on to our first agenda item. Please join me for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board and friends, I became aware today that this is a special day to recognize the equality of women. And I'm sure we all agree that there's no question regarding that matter, but you might want to give some thought to that at this time during the moment of silence. Thank you.
And now the pledge.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So today we got some very good news. Easthamfield Township Police Department has been certified as an accredited police department through the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission. This has been a long process, a lot of hard work went into this. I'd like to recognize our chief, Chief Skiles. Could you please come and speak and say, give us a little update on what went into this and how we got here?
First, I'd like to thank Cindy, I haven't gotten balloons since I was six. I just wanted to give you a little background on what accreditation is, much like colleges, healthcare organizations have accreditation. It's really just a process that we went through to to recognize that we're engaging in the best practices in law enforcement. We want our stakeholders, our customers, community to know that we're doing our best to live up to the highest professional level. So in Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission is what recognizes police accreditation. There are one hundred and thirty-nine standards and about a hundred and or three hundred bullet points. So every year we have to show that we are doing what we claim to be doing. So people will come in, go through our records toward the facility and pull proof that we're doing what we say we do. So we originally, well, let me go way back. When I got hired here in two thousand and ten, I was told that the department was going to be accredited in three months. And I looked at it and we weren't in the position to be accredited at that point. And then over the years, it kept getting pushed to the back burner because other more important things came up. And then I got to a point in my career where I felt we're doing things professionally. Our policies meet the accreditation standards. But in the last couple of years with all the things that were have been going on in society kind of aimed at law enforcement, I wanted a third party to come in and look at us and say that we're doing things the right way. So back in two thousand and twenty, we applied at the state level, asked to become part of the accreditation process. And over the last eighteen months, we've gone through our policies, we've updated, tweaked some things. And then the culmination of that back in October was a three, the three-person panel from the state came in. They spent two days here looking at our facility, looking at our policies, digging through our, our personal business to make sure that we were doing what we say we are in terms of our evidence collection, our arrest procedures, our handling of money, finances. And they went through that and today was the day that they took a vote on on us. So today we were formally accredited, so we joined, I think there were a hundred and forty departments out of the twelve hundred in the state. So about twelve percent of the law enforcement in the state have this achievement. So for me, it's, it's a, I would say, one of the highlights of my career of after thirty-six years. So I'm proud of the department and I, I really appreciate the support that the Board of Supervisors has given to us and Township Manager for standing behind us. And without that support, we wouldn't be able to be where we're at and get these balloons. So we also get stickers for the cars. I'm not sure whether we're going to do that and I told Cindy today, I spent years, there are six other departments in Lancaster County that are accredited. There are twenty-eight departments in the county. And I spent a number of years saying, I don't need a sticker to say that I'm a professional department, but now I kind of want the sticker. We may get those stickers. So I, again, I appreciate it. And if you have any questions about accreditation, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Job well done.
Thank you.
Our next item for business is a hearing for zoning text amendment. And at this time, I'd like to turn things over to our solicitor, Susan Piper.
Okay. Thank you. This is going to be a public hearing to take comments and a presentation from the petitioning party in, in support of their application to amend the zoning ordinance. In this case, the applicant is proposing certain text amendments to the zoning ordinance and those have been spelled out in the ordinance that you have before you. I will note that notice of tonight's hearing has been properly advertised. When we begin the hearing, we'll have the petitioner or its counsel come forward and present an explanation of the reasons for their request and the proposed ordinance. They will then be subject to questions from the board. After the board has happened, had an opportunity to ask their questions, I would suggest you open it up to the public to see if there's any interested parties who may have questions for the petitioner. After all, the public comment has been presented, the board should close the hearing and then you can open discussion as to whether you wish to adopt the ordinance that you have before you. Okay. All right. So with that, we'll have the petitioner come forward.
Good evening. My name's Ash McComby. I'm an attorney with McNeese Wallace and Eric at one hundred Pine Street. First, congratulations to the township and and the police force on on the accreditation. That's, that's great and something I'm sure you put a lot of time into. With me this evening is Mike Zemba and the team from U-Haul. We're here to discuss a thirteen-point-three acre property where where they would like to construct a new U-Haul facility for self-storage, storage of recreational vehicles, moving truck rental that that you see here in the area. The property is in the CBC Center Zone, excuse me, the CB Center Zone, Community Business Center Zone. And it's located behind Turkey Hill across from Kelly Cadillac. Kind of behind the Turkey Hill there. It's currently a vacant property and there's no sewer or water on on that side of two eighty-three as as you folks know. Fortunately, this project does not require public sewer or water. So that's, that's not necessarily a bad thing. You know, this, this project's been around in the township for a while. We originally came and met with township staff back in October of two thousand and twenty-one. Provided a presentation to the planning committee in November. Submitted the petition in December, came before the board in January. LCPC recommended approval in February and then we were before the Township Planning Commission for recommendation of approval in February as well. So I know the project's gone, gone through the rigors here in in the township. And of course, you know, if it's approved, we'll, we'll have to go through land development and and all of that process as well. If this text amendment is approved, so I'm, I'm happy to to walk everybody through it in detail if that's what you'd like. Or else I can explain to you that that this is the site here on the screen, just north two eighty-three. And if you wouldn't mind going, whoever's running the, maybe go up one, one more. Page two. This is kind of a, a concept site plan that that we have put together. You can see the building to the rear of the property, the hashed lines. I don't have my pointer or the storage area and then there we go. Right, so this cursor is on the building right now and then the hash lines are where storage would be. Your packets also contain elevations and additional depictions of of the property. And like I said, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that that you folks have or that the U-Haul people might be able to answer for you. But I don't want to take up any more of your time than than is necessary this evening.
Gentlemen, anybody from the board with questions?
Just for a matter of record, how long has the property been zoned commercial? Does it get that on the record?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that. Perhaps the engineer or Cindy, do you have an idea of how long it's been?
I would venture a guess, it's probably since the Turkey Hill has been there.
What's the ballpark number for that, twenty years at this point? Ten years?
Better than fifteen, definitely, yes. Probably twenty-five, yeah.
And so rounding rounding twenty to thirty years has been zoned commercial.
Correct.
This happens to be farmed, but it is zoned commercial.
I have a question. The petition says this site is within the urban growth boundary, which, and I don't know if we can bring up that boundary or not, but my understanding has been that Route two eighty-three is the boundary and this is north of that. So I'd like correction on my understanding of that. Or just maybe a correction in the petition that it is noted where truly is.
Yeah, I, I believe the County Planning Commission looked that over as well.
Yeah, they would have made note if it was not in the urban growth boundary.
Well, it's possible since that area was already CDC zoning that that may have been a bit north of two eighty-three and then it came to two eighty-three for the rest of the westernly distance. I think it would be good for the board to know if two eighty-three is not truly the border.
It is not.
Yeah, I believe it is not that the county, when they did their report and did their review, they comment that the applicant is proposing the amendments to develop a U-Haul facility on a vacant thirteen-point-three acre property on the northeast corner of two eighty-three and State Road interchange, interchange zone CBC. While located in the central Lancaster urban growth area, the nearest water and sewer facilities are south of two eighty-three, making it extremely difficult to serve this area with with sewer and water. So I think they are concurring that it is in that growth area, even though it's on the north side of of two eighty-three. But I, I, I don't know where the exact line is. Would have to pull a map to look at that.
Looking for one now. But it might take me a while.
Okay, while she's looking, any other questions?
No, just as, as we would anticipate an approval for this project, it may set some precedent of others going west around two eighty-three and it would be beneficial if we knew a true boundary of that. I'm not objecting to it, I'm, I'm just looking for a clarification for future reference.
And are you talking about other potential projects of a similar nature of a self-storage?
Well, anything that is other than agriculture.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Understood.
Anything other than agriculture.
Yes, sir.
So for your benefit, our board has taken the position that there would be no rezoning north of two eighty-three from land that's agricultural. This particular property has already, has already been rezoned many years ago. So I think that's the point Mr. Lefebvre was trying to get to.
The map on the screen is your urban growth boundary. The area in green, which doesn't show there.
If I'm reading it correctly, I see a straight line across the top of the township, that, that doesn't look like two eighty-three.
Look at the television, you can see the coloring.
Let's see, it's right there, right? It juts out a little bit. Be the airport.
Just east of the state road line, you can see on the, over the two, the eight, the three and the E, it kind of juts up for some, you know, around that area. Presumably is, is somebody mentioned, my, my guess would be that was probably where the the Turkey Hill and and some development already existed. So when this was put together, it made sense to allow additional development right where you already had some commercial or at least thoughts of commercial at the time.
You know, all three tracks, the Kelly Cadillac, the Turkey Hill on this track all are in the urban growth boundary, looking at the map.
Well, thank you, Ms. Switzer. Mister.
A quick question, could the applicant or staff indicate what is it that require, what's happening here that requires a text amendment?
Sure, I'm happy to walk you through it. So as, as we said, the CBC already permits self-storage facilities and motor vehicle leasing by right. However, most of the tracks in the CBC are are smaller. This track is thirteen acres, most of them are are well under ten. And as a result, the CBC limitations for size of buildings and and those types of things are smaller because the tracks are are generally smaller. So it didn't account for larger tracks like this one that's, that's thirteen acres. So one thing that it does is is allow a larger building, sixty-five thousand square feet, which is consistent with the maximum size for grocery stores in the CBC zone. That's, that is the one change. The additional changes are clarifications in the amendment to clarify that RVs as well as boats and and travel trailers are are permitted in outdoor storage areas in self-storage facility. And then finally, it clarifies that public water and sewer connections are not required for uses in the CBC if prohibitively expensive. You know, part of the impetus for that being that it it's our understanding, the township really doesn't want to have sewer and water going north of of two eighty-three. We want to keep as much as the ag there that that we have already. And so this is a project that fits in that CBC zone that that doesn't require public sewer and water. And it'll take one more piece off, off the books that you have to worry about.
So, so it's not, it's not the use of the land that's, that's changing at all.
Oh, so the use is already permitted.
Right.
It's just saying that.
Size and scope of the, of project.
Correct. Fifteen thousand square foot building on a thirteen acre property would be, you know, quite, quite small. And so we were looking to make it more consistent with supermarket use that's, you know, about the, that same sixty-five thousand.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the board?
What will be the limits placed on outdoor storage of boats, RVs and travel trailers?
Yeah, so right now the, the limitations in the ordinance and in this amendment require that they be behind the front setback line. They can also, anywhere where they are abutting residential uses will need to be screened, screened from view. So your setback line, you can see is they're kind of on the flag lot where it comes up around on the State Street side of the property. where it comes up around on the State Street side of the property. So it would need to be behind that front setback.
The surrounding land is zoned for agriculture.
That's correct.
Residential, so it wouldn't require screening.
That's correct, although are you planning screening?
Excuse me, you'll have to speak into the microphone. You can take it to your seat if you'd like.
My name is Mike Zumba. I'm with U-Haul. So a couple of the renditions here will show you a little bit about what the the facility could look like. This is a rendition of that particular property. We've also done a few more presentations with some other types of looks to fit in. As far as the landscaping that we do around there, the boat and RV will be covered, if you will. So it'll shield anything that's being stored there from the weather. And we are proposing storage units around there as well, plus we do screening with trees, fir trees around the backside, things of that nature.
Has an engineering study been done for stormwater?
Yes, it has. And the staff has been very helpful with that prior to purchase. So we had a perk test and geos and soils done. So we're pretty familiar with what can and we'll address all of that through land development.
Is it all percolation on the site?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Go ahead and open it up.
Okay. Anyone from the audience have any questions? Anyone from Zoom? So should we close the hearing?
So at this point, unless the petition has anything more to present, I'd go ahead and close your hearing.
So we'll close the hearing. Do we have this up for action at a later point in the agenda?
We do.
Okay. Very good. So thank you. Up next is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second? Second by Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Epstein.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Okay, our first action item will be the American Real Estate Company zoning text amendment change ordinance twenty-two oh three. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like a motion to propose a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-two oh three. As any text amendment making modifications to the community business zone.
Motion by Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Welcome to the township.
Up next, the International Property Maintenance Code, twenty-eighteen edition ordinance twenty-two oh four, Ms. Schweitzer.
So you had the building code official attend your last meeting to explain to you the his desire to move from the twenty-fifteen building maintenance code to the twenty-eight, not building, property maintenance code to the twenty-eighteen edition. This ordinance has been advertised, and this is this will accomplish that task.
Any discussion on this? Okay. Any comments or questions from the audience on this, on building maintenance code, Zoom? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two oh four, which establishes the use of the International Property Maintenance Code twenty-eighteen edition? Motion by Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, hotel guest registration draft ordinance, request to advertise for adoption. Is this going to be chief or?
This was discussed before. This is really just a proactive means for the the police department to maintain safety in in and around our hotels and motels in the township. Everybody knows that sometimes hotels can kind of go downhill and attract prostitution, drug dealing, and things like that. This is just, we were looking for a tool that we would use in the event that we have a problem like that in the township. This has been effective in other townships in the county, and that's why we brought it to your attention. We've, at your request, contacted the managers or the owners of the hotels in the township, and everybody wants to run a a legit organization, and we haven't had any pushback on our side.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, let me do say that in a nutshell, really, all this does is what most hotels already do, because when you check in, you give your name, some kind of ID, you pay with with a card, and then you sign in the number of guests that you have. There are some hotels that just take, you know, cash. Somebody's there for a quick transaction, and then they leave, and then some crime occurs, and there's no way to follow up on those people. So this just ensures that people are legitimate.
Is there a periodic check of the records of these establishments?
Within the the ordinance, there's a provision for the a period of time that they have to maintain the records so that we can then go back and and pull the records. So and and a lot of the the hotels, we found, were already doing that. So this actually helps some of those managers keep their staff honest so that they're filling out the the proper paperwork that's in many cases already requested.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Any from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to authorize staff to advertise a draft ordinance, which will require operators to maintain a register of information about guests and fixing penalties for failure to do so? Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion carries five to zero. Up next, the twenty-twenty-two road paving and blacktop bid results.
So Mr. Madonna is out on medical. I'll take this one for him. We have developed a list of roadways that need to be paved this year. It's a one-point two million dollar project. Pennsy Supply has received the the low bid at one million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. And then we also provide a bid for paving materials that we pick up with our trucks, and that bid is at seventy-nine thousand, thirty-five dollars. And we ask that you authorize to sign the agreements.
Okay. Any discussion, comments from the board on this?
All good. I mean, Mr. Madonna had commented on the increase in prices, so we just, it's a new world we live in.
Right.
High oil, high inflation. It impacts paving.
Okay. Any comments from the audience or from Zoom? Okay. Is there a motion to award the twenty-twenty-two paving projects bid to the low bidder, Pennsy Supply, Harrisburg, at a cost of one million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents, and award the paving materials picked up by the township trucks to highway materials to floor town at a cost of seventy-nine thousand, thirty-five dollars? Motion by Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Up next, the two thousand twenty-two fee schedule, adoption of the schedule with resolution twenty-two oh nine.
So this fee schedule has been looked at for quite a few months. The last time we adopted a fee schedule was in twenty-twenty. Generally speaking, the fee schedules that you have listed here have not changed. The philosophy of the board supervisors is generally to keep fees in line with what the cost is. So the only significant changes that this fee schedule has is a new approach to subdivision land development escrows. They are now based on value of the project. We were having a cash flow issue with our escrow account. This corrects that. The other more significant thing is the sorry, the police police fee schedule. We now have provisions for Act twenty-two, which is addresses the costs associated with getting footage from their body worn cameras. The last thing that I just wanted to point out to you is the pavilion rental fees. We used to have or require a security deposit for all rentals of the pavilion. It is probably since I've been here, we may have collected that once or twice. So what I'm proposing is to remove that requirement and then simplify the fee schedule so that we have a nonprofit, we have a resident, we have a non-resident rate. The fees are also based on size of the the event that was taking place, and we're removing those as well. So other than that, they are generally the same as they have been.
I'm not sure if I missed it, but did you mention that the confirmation report from the police department is now zero dollars?
No, I did not.
Okay.
That used to be five. There was conversation with the board. We now made that zero.
Did talk about that, and I'm
Yes.
Happy to see that it's zero. So thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any from the audience? Any from Zoom? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt the twenty-twenty-two fee schedule, resolution twenty-two oh nine, accepting the twenty-twenty-two fee schedule as presented and discussed?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have a request from Sergeant Hessinger for disability pension pension retirement effective February twenty-eight, twenty-two.
So Sergeant Hessinger sustained an injury on on duty in I think June is when when he sustained his injury. It resulted in a need to go to full disability. He is no longer to able to perform his duties as a police officer. He has medical documentation to back that up, and he has requested a disability pension to be issued by the board of supervisors.
Any discussion or comments on this?
Talked about this in public safety, and it's a win-win for all sides.
My only comment is I I see this notification from him. It's not signed. Could that ever become an issue?
No. This is the same process we use for Mrs. Sergeant Marsh or Lieutenant Marsh retired. It is was an email that was sent to us with essentially
Okay.
Makes the requests.
Our attorney's here.
It's it's very vague in terms of what's required in our CBA and also our pension document.
Okay.
And we also checked with Gerard, who also administers our pension, and they were fine with this process.
Any other comments, questions? Any questions from the audience? Okay, any from Zoom? Hearing seeing none. Is there a motion to grant Sergeant Hessinger's request for disability pension and retirement effective date of February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two?
Motion with regrets.
Wish for his health.
Okay. So motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. LaFever, and you both, I think, were saying the same thing, and I couldn't understand what it was, so.
Wish for his good health.
Okay.
Accepting of both regrets.
Very good. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Board goals. So.
These were discussed at the last meeting and probably one or two meetings before that. These reflect, I believe, your conversations you had last meeting.
So any, any further comment or any other questions or things to discuss about the board goals? Mr. Russell?
Nope.
Mr. Bennett?
Good. It's like what we talked about.
Sounds good. Any questions or comments from the audience? And just as a matter of explanation, the board adopts goals so that we have something to look back at at the end of the year to say that, you know, hey, we we did accomplish these things that we set out to do, and they don't just stay stagnant. And that's the reason for them. Any comments from or questions from Zoom? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the board goals for twenty-twenty-two as presented?
Some of.
Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Old business. Don't have any on the agenda. Does anyone have any old business they wish to bring up?
You got the accreditation that today I was reminded of the question of our security fencing here. Is there an update on that?
Chief. Security fence.
I think we have are at the point that we have to put the bids together, the document together for bidding. Mr. Madonna is out on medical until probably the end of March. But that's kind of where we're at.
How about the community gardens?
The community gardens will have to be decided by the board of supervisors if they choose to move them to the property on Nissley Road. When we looked at that, if you're standing at the property where the house stood instead of to the left, which is very marshy and has some trees in it, Perry has suggested that it should be to the right, which is a bit higher and also has ample sun and could function quite well. So the gardens are actually have been rented for the seasons. This would be effective twenty-twenty-three. But we can prep it with the water access and driveway access if the board desires to move them.
So back to the security fence, I think if I remember the last meeting or the meeting before, we had discussed that the estate police did an evaluation where there's some additional recommendations that they had incorporated into, which we're looking to add to the fence as well. So it project grew just a little bit.
On the other thing, too, is it's we're putting a security fence up. We're still leaving the gardens back there, too.
Right, so that right doesn't.
It almost kind of makes sense. Maybe we wait until we move the gardens.
Well, we're we're thinking if we move forward with the bid process for the fence, till we select a contractor actually ask him to proceed, it could be probably in the fall when the gardens are are closing down. Or we could actually arrange it that way, that that
We could just do the timing. It'd be good to to put a security fence with do not enter signs, and then having the community drive back there to the garden really kind of defeats the whole purpose of putting up a security fence in the first place.
Right.
Do we have a plan?
We do have a plan, yes.
Was it before public safety already?
I think at one point it was. Probably not the current public safety.
Right, maybe if you could.
But we can share that with you. Share it with the whole board, yeah.
Any new business? Managers report, board group report.
So everything, all the projects seem to be. So everything, all the projects seem to be shifting forward in terms of when the bidding documents are going out for bid. Center Road South, still moving through that process. They anticipate notice to proceed in early July. They still have questions if that's going to get accomplished or not. We did solve our problem with the adjustments to the program costs, which you had done at your last meeting. So hopefully that will then follow through with reimbursement from the state shortly. The Church Street paving, I have not heard anything other than that let date has moved. And they hope that let date will now be four 14 with a notice to proceed on 5/31. Old Roystown Road Bridge, it seems like we make some strides and then we kind of hold on for a little bit and then we move forward again. The let date on that one is 4/28. We're getting close to that one. Farmingdale Road, likewise, we're hoping for a bid on in March of this year, this month. I've spoken to our traffic engineer. I did get a timeline from him. It's not very specific. We're hopeful that we can complete the rest of the traffic signal easements next week, get those signed. They've all been contacted and we've reached out. I sent backup emails before the meeting tonight. So hopefully those will get accomplished. Once those are accomplished, it'll go for PENDOT for a permit issuance. Mr. Bauer indicated that that is a very fast process. They have 30 days, but it usually goes faster than that. And then once we get that, we can bid the project and he wants it out for bid for about three weeks. So it seems feasible. Hopefully that works out. The Stony Battery Road Trail, we held our meeting on February 24th, was well attended. We got to speak with most of the property owners on the path. And they hope to have that installed in the various properties by the end of summer. The Dairy Road Project, Bridge Project, nothing new to report there. I'm actually still waiting for some documentation on those grants. So that's kind of at a standstill at this point. The DCNR grant, I will be meeting with the representative from DCNR as along with our engineer, I believe, on Monday to talk about, no, I'm sorry, wrong project. The DCNR grant award that for Aheer Park, which is phase two, I am still waiting for grant documents on that. And they indicated that would be several weeks. So still waiting for that. I, one thing I did not add to this was the Noel Doorward Park, which I think is part of my committee reports. The Noel Doorward Park, there is actually a sketch plan that shows that park being developed with a tot lot, bigger than a tot lot, pavilion and some additional parking. So we're looking at possible grant revenues for that through DCNR with Mr. Haynes Group. In terms of group reports, the MS4 Committee, Stormwater Committee met. We discussed some projects, some concerns. We discussed and concluded that we need to walk the Pendleton Drive and the Park Avenue Detention Basin. That walk has been scheduled so that can determine where that detention basin stands, what the problems are, so that we can develop a path forward. They, we reviewed the grant submissions for the Four Seasons, the Aheer and the Noel Doorward Park. They reviewed the conditions of the basins at the Noel Doorward Park and acknowledged the fact that Public Works does need to do some maintenance on those basins. We also have David Miller Associates going out and doing some additional survey work on the Nissley Road Basin. We discussed some minor stormwater improvements to Westwood Drive and Deer Lane and Hunter's Path. Fairly minor projects, but something that needs to be taken care of. Also, the Harrisburg Pike Channel that runs parallel to Harrisburg Pike is actually owned by the township. We have provisions and a design to fix that. However, we need to look at the upstream problem area and what we're going to be doing is doing some additional survey work on that stretch. So that we can figure out exactly what needs to be done so that whatever we do on the lower half is not totally destroyed in the process. We also reviewed where the MS4 program stands at this point in time. DMA is working through the BMP inspections, the best management practice basin inspections. We had five groups. I think they've completed two. They're working or going to be starting the almost finished with the third one. They'll be starting the fourth and the fifth. The Park and Rec Group met. We discussed pickleball and relocation of the courts, the pickleball courts to the tennis courts. It's concluded that we can fit six courts on the tennis courts and still have one tennis court open for tennis play. We requested DMA to move forward with the master plan for the improvements at Noel Doorward, which is what I talked about, which includes a pavilion playground and added parking. We're looking at a DCNR implementation grant. The exciting part is that we also met with the Hemfield Rotary Representatives. They are very interested in being a partner to that project. So we are going to work with them and move them along as we move through the process. We have not heard anything more regarding Hemfield Youth Association Baseball or the Dog Park Group that was interested in a dog park. And we also addressed a concern regarding a noise complaint regarding the backboard, baseball backboard at Aheer Park. The Public Safety Committee met. The group discussed the path forward and working with East Petersburg Bureau concerning the modifications to the intermunicipal agreement for fire services. There was an additional meeting this evening regarding elected officials. So hopefully that is moving forward. The Recreation Authority met on the 23rd. The authority has assigned a subcommittee who have met to discuss moving forward with the operations and maintenance agreements and the employee lease, which was the draft. Both draft documents were drafted when the authority was created. They were put in the back burner. But they have now moved forward on the authorities list and hopefully doing those will create an autonomy for the Recreation Authority moving forward. Planning Group Report, the sign ordinance amendment is out for review. I anticipate that being on your April 20th agenda. The South Chickies Road rezoning petition from Ag Holding to Enterprise is going to be on your next agenda on 3/16. We are still waiting for any word regarding a Wendy's on State Road. That formal submission has not happened yet. Working through the sketch plan process with Sheets at Florrie Mill and Roystown Road. The Colebrook Apartments have submitted a zoning hearing petition to seek relief to allow them to develop the remaining acreage on their, their land, which is off of Old Roystown Road. And we also met with PDQ, which is on Knott Road to begin discussions on an expansion of their facility, which is great news. They're fairly new and are already expanding.
PDQ?
PDQ is at around the roundabout. It would be on the, going down Knoll, it would be on the left. Keaton Controls across the street. PDQ, Twizzler.
Yeah. Knoll, not Knott.
Sorry, Knoll.
Thank you.
That concludes my report unless there's questions.
I did have a question about parks and rec. So when the tennis courts move, if they're, or excuse me, when the pickleball moves, they're not playing pickleball. Are the tennis courts able to be utilized?
Yes, that's the plan right now, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then a follow-up question there. I'm assuming it was the basketball backboard?
Yes.
Okay. Is that the same neighbor that had complained? Okay. Are we looking to do anything with the pavement once that's moved? It's down there now. Is there going to be another basketball court? Is there going to be something different? Are we going to make use?
We're looking at a couple of options, but we've decided nothing.
Okay.
We're just going, we may keep it as pickleball and just let the casual pickleball player play there. I mean, there's, there's no way we really can prohibit somebody from coming in and they got the net and putting it up. What we're trying to eliminate is the heavy use of the pickleball courts that we get in the morning. And moving that pickleball noise further into the park. That's what we're trying to, trying to create. But we're still, we've got some issues to work out with the rec as far as the summer program. We're still we're only 50% home on that right now, I would say.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have.
I've got two quick questions. On Farmingdale Road, where on, what will be the first initiative on Farmingdale Road? What, the intersection?
Based on discussions by the board supervisors, the first intersection will be Marietta and Good, then going to Good and Orville. And then lastly, Orville and Farmingdale.
So Farming, actually Farmingdale will be at the, at the back end of.
Yes.
Okay, that's great. And I guess since we're talking parks and rec, any chance we got a picture of the Noel Doorward concept? I think that might be good to share with the, with the board. I thought it was pretty sharp.
It's amazing that DMA got it together as quick as they did.
Hmm.
And it's amazing how much space that we have out there that we can use.
Blow it up a little bit.
So the top two green lines are just improvements to the existing basin and also the boardwalk that connects the two. But the, the features there are pretty obvious. It's the playground, it's the pavilion, it's expanded parking. Restroom facilities, which would be temporary facilities. There's no water to the site and this does not propose to add any water or sewer.
We expand the parking a little bit also.
The parking was expanded and kind of formalized. Right now it's gravel and a little less uniform. So we proposed that in this, this sketch shows that it would be paved similar to a lot of your other, the other facilities. We showed a casual picnic area sort of off to the, to the right side of the parking, the parking area, just some picnic tables and amongst some trees where often if you go over to that park at lunchtime, you see people just sitting in their cars eating. We thought it might give them an opportunity just to get out. If they didn't want to sit under the pavilion, they could still sit at a table and, and maybe have their, maybe have their lunch. As Cindy I mentioned, we did, we did touch on the walkway as it goes up sort of across the creek or ditch. That's often wet and a little bit and difficult to get through. So we proposed that that would be improved either with a boardwalk or at least with asphalt and some drainage pipes.
So again, just a concept, but we've encouraged suggestions from other board members, obviously.
So there, there is a, there is a grant opportunity for implementation through DCNR. So that sort of sped this process along a little bit. So we did prepare this and we are working through some, some cost estimates with, with a local, local provider that does CoStar available playground and picnic table and pavilion equipment. So they're helping us now to put some, some costs together for that so that we will be ready to, to work with DCNR. And I believe there is a meeting scheduled with Lori from DCNR to go out to the site. She enjoys site visits. So we're going to meet her out on site and try and sell this one for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the manager's report?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver? Okay. Any questions, comments from the audience? Okay. So we'll open it up now for public comment for residents and taxpayers of East Temple Township. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment? Okay. Anybody online? Okay. Last call. Okay. We will have an executive session immediately after this meeting for a legal matter and we will not return. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.